Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Oops, Mr. President, actually. Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
And now, Mr. President.
Here.
Yeah.
Thank you. Would everybody please stand for his pledge of allegiance and remain standing for our invitation by council member Mitch Paul.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencouraged, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon. I'm just thinking about what season it is. This is baseball season, so how do we use the word baseball?
Oh, I don't have it. He does, but he didn't give it to us, what he reads.
City Clerk certified publication in Daily Record. On June 13th, North River Precinct Council and Regular City Council meeting June 17th, 2014. A current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
And we're going to go ahead and get started. We're not going to debate at this particular forum. I don't have the written document in front of me, but I think most of you know that we're going to conduct this in a fair and rational manner, and we're going to move forward with our first item.
Mr. Clerk?
Turn off all your cell phones.
Oh, yeah, please turn off all your cell-- I better do that myself. Turn off all your cell phones or turn them to vibrate, please. Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
This is only ordinance on final rating planning board attachments. Items five through eight are one case. Five is ordinance to rezone property located northeast 192nd and Leavenworth Street from agriculture district to R6, low-density multifamily residential district. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. Six is an ordinance to approve a planned unit development overlay district. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. Seven is resolution that the plat entitled Grove Ridge is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. And eight is a subdivision agreement is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. This is continuation of the public hearing today. We will hear from the proponents first and then any opponents. We've been working on this for a while, so if you have any new testimony, that would be appreciated. I would like for us to not go over any old ground if we don't have to. But let's start with the proponents. Mr. Jobin.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road. Appearing on behalf of the applicant DP Management. With me today from DP Management is Terry Klauff, Josh Vickery, Chris Nielsen, and Mike Carter of the Development Group. And also with me today is Jeff Elliott of E&amp;A Consulting Group, the consulting engineers on this particular project. So if you have any questions about traffic or those types of issues that relate to civil engineering and traffic, Jeff is here to answer those questions. As Buster said, the approvals that we're seeking today are, I think it's important to see exactly what we're seeking approvals of today. But rezoning from Ag to DR and R6, low-density multifamily residential district with the PUD, also final plat approval, which the preliminary plat, of course, you know, came to this council some time ago, and there was quite a bit of debate at that point in time, which actually went beyond the preliminary plat and more into the zoning and land use aspects of it. So we had quite a bit of discussion on that as well. But today, we're here on the final plat. And of course, the final plat conforms to the preliminary plat. So what you saw on the preliminary plat, you're seeing today in the final platform. Also, what we have today, of course, is a subdivision agreement that deals with the installation of the public infrastructure and how the property is to be developed generally. The project, obviously, or consistently with what was talked about at the preliminary plat hearing, is that it's market-rate apartments. It's going to be developed into two phases. It's located at the northeast corner of 192nd and Leavenworth. So you have Leavenworth Street here, 192nd Street here. The total area, including the Phase 1 that's before you today and Phase 2, is 38.62 acres. The total number of units, although, again, all this before you today is the Phase 1, so we're going to really limit our testimony and our presentation to the Phase 1. But I just wanted to let you know that as part of the preliminary plat, which included the entire Phase 1 and Phase 2 property, we were calling for a total of 522 units, but that's not what's before you today. Phase 1 is what we're here today on, and this might be a little clearer. And then when we go back to the site plan, you can see what we're talking about. What I crosshatched here is the Phase 2 property. So what you see here on Phase 1 is the outlot and lots 1, 2, and 3. The Phase 1 property consists of 24.866 acres. The outlot area is 4.571 acres. So the Phase 1 buildable area is 20.295 acres. They're calling for 272 units. This has a density of 10.94 units per acre. Again, the Phase 2 property will come at some point down the road, and we're calling for up to 250 units in the Phase 2, and that is a density of 15.66 units, if that were to be constructed later. But again, that's a separate PUD. That's a separate zoning request to approve that particular development of Phase 2 and the PUD. If there were going to be the 522 units, it would be a total density of 13.51 units per acre. But again, Phase 2 is not before you today. We're talking about--
Push it down so I can see what Phase 2 looks like.
Yeah, Phase-- well, this might give you a little-- so Phase 2 is crosshatched in red. Phase 1 is highlighted in yellow. And again, this was consistent with what was presented during the preliminary plat as well. The building types, they're calling for 34 eight-plex buildings. There's 136 one-bedroom units and 136 two-bedroom units being called for. There's a clubhouse in this particular location with a swimming pool, exercise facility, and a gathering space. There's also a trail that goes along and connects to the park here in the Grove. There's also a dog park. And then, of course, there's the retention pond on Outlot A that's shown here. As you can see, there's generous amounts of green space in Phase 1. And I think it's interesting, from a percentage perspective, Lot 1, which is this lot here, is 54 percent green space. So over half the lot is green space and not with pervious coverage, or impervious coverage, I mean. Lot 2 here is 72 percent green space. So well over half the lot is actual green space. Lot 3 here is 60 percent green space. And then, if we were talking about Phase 2, that's 58 percent green space. So not one of these lots has less than 50 percent of green space on them. In fact, most of them have above, or right at 60 or above. As far as the setbacks, this top depiction is the eastern boundary of the development, so it's right along here. What's required by code is a 20-foot buffer yard and a 25-foot setback. We are actually providing a 55-foot setback from the property line to the back of the building here. So you have 55 feet. And if you take the 25 feet on the setback, minimum setback requirement on the residential side, you know, you're sitting back about 80 feet from the minimum setback to the building. But actually, most of those houses actually sit further away than the minimum setback requirement. So you're really about 100 feet away from the single-family residential house to the back of the face of the building. As far as the, this lower depiction shows the buffer yard and setback on the south side of the development. This is here along Leavenworth. And what was required there, again, was a 20-foot buffer yard and 25-foot setback requirement, and we are providing 30 feet at that location. So up against Leavenworth, there's actually exceeding that buffer yard and setback requirement as well. As far as parking, there are 14 parking garage called for here. There's 112 parking spaces that are undercover within a garage parking facility. And there's 417 surface parking spaces. That is a total of 529 spaces or 2.0 parking spaces per unit, provided there's only 1.5 parking spaces required. So that would only, that would be comprised of about 408 parking spaces. So we've got an excess of about 121 parking spaces here on this particular site. As far as the building materials, again, this is a PUD. So what you see is what you get here with respect to the site plan, also with respect to the building materials. And the building material choices consist of asphalt shingles, also cement siding. I believe there's three different colors that are represented in these depictions. And of course, that's part of the PUD as well. There is brick veneer and stone veneer. So everything here with respect to material choices are long-lasting type materials to make sure that they look good now and in the future as well, and have minimum maintenance requirements. As far as the building heights, I think this is important, too, because it shows the compatibility with this project to the adjacent residential neighborhood of the Grove to the east and the south. There is the ridge line, which is the top of the roof, is at 29 feet. The mid-roof line is at 24 feet. And the soffit, which is where the gutter is essentially, is 17.6 feet. And I do have some comparisons of what you would see with this particular project in comparison with other multifamily projects. In this particular case, the top one compares what's being proposed here with what you would see in an eight versus a standard 24-plex apartment that would be really high-density multifamily housing, if you will, as opposed to low-density. There, the standard roof is generally about 42 feet in height. We're at 29 feet in height. And then when you compare that to the single-family, one-story building elevation, you're at 20 feet with the single-family residence. And again, you're only at 29 feet at the top of the ridge line with respect to these units. So there's not much difference. And then when you take the setbacks and the difference in, or the distance that you have between the residential houses and these particular buildings, I mean, that's a negligible difference of nine feet. And that's on a single-story, single-family residential house. On a two-story that's representative in the Grove area, you've got a ridge roof line of about 26 feet in height in comparison to 29 feet in height. So you have a three-foot difference in height, again, about 100 feet away from each other on the east side of the development. We, as you know, from the preliminary plat phase of this project, we did meet with the neighbors. I've met with representatives of the HOA. I've met with representatives of the Sanitary Improvement District to discuss their concerns. I'm not really sure what those are. As far as public infrastructure, the Grove is obviously a public street system, and this makes a connection to those public streets that is called for by the master plan. And I also wanted to point out that in those neighborhood meetings, we did listen to the neighbors, and there were concessions made. Just to recall those, or refresh your recollection on those. We did increase the buffer yard as I talked from about 20 feet to 55 feet. That was one of the concessions that were made from the neighborhood meeting. We added an access point from the site onto Leavenworth Street at about 191st Street at this location here. We agreed to maintain the berm. I think this is interesting. If you haven't driven out there, this is the elevation or grade change from Leavenworth to the site. So that's about 16 feet grade change. We're actually bringing that down to about 6 feet with landscaping. So I think it'll be a substantially nicer look than this kind of wall of earth that is sitting there. We also moved the clubhouse. The original plan called for the clubhouse to be closer to the eastern boundary of the property. That was shifted to the west. And there was a dog park added because there was concerns about dogs having nowhere to go. Now they have a place to go within the site itself. We eliminated some of the on-street parking. The on-street parking was here. It actually extended closer to the neighborhood. We eliminated some of those parking stalls. And we were requested to direct access directly onto 192nd Street, but Public Works wouldn't support that. So what we have here is an access point at 192nd and Leavenworth, and then a future access point. I'll get back to what's before you today is this public street system makes a connection here, public street here, and then when Phase 2 is developed, the public street system will be extended into the north. And then there'll be another east-west connection to 192nd Street at about this location that meets all the requirements of the master plan there. Again, as I discussed before, the final plat's in conformance with the preliminary plat. The master plan calls for this area to be low-density residential development. 3,000 square foot of land per unit is the minimum. The PUD uses the more restrictive R5 instead of the R6 site development regulations with respect to density. And this development is considered to be low-density because it complies with the site area per-unit regulations of the R5 district and will be within a PUD. So that's what gets us outside of some of those requirements in the master plan with the PUD and with the less-dense site regulators of R5 being applied here. The future land use element of the master plan provides that low-density residential areas are intended to be utilized primarily for the construction of single-family detached houses, duplexes, townhomes, and other forms of low-density residential housing. This development falls within the category of other forms of low-density housing. Remember, as we discussed in the preliminary plat stage, you could have row houses that would be horizontal. These just happen to be vertical, so they're stacked on top of each other as opposed to row houses. But the density is still low, and there's no difference between that. It's just a form of housing that might be a little different. The concept element of the master plan provides that the city will ensure that there's policies and programs that are in place to create healthy and diverse neighborhoods, to ensure that Omahans have access to all styles and types of housing in multiple market ranges throughout the city, and also to provide opportunities that are available for Omahans to find affordable housing throughout the city. So this is consistent with the master plan from a density perspective, from a concept element perspective. There are no adverse impacts with respect to traffic. And again, Jeff Elliott's here to talk about the traffic study. If you recall from the preliminary plat portion of this process, there is not a traffic signal currently warranted with this development at 192nd and Leavenworth, which really shows, again, that it is low-density because the traffic impacts aren't even sufficient to warrant a traffic signal at this particular location. If it was high-density, it probably would trigger a traffic signal at that particular location. And then I guess I'd just point out that this matter comes to you with favorable recommendations from all the various departments of the city. Comes to you with favorable recommendation of the planning board as well. And of course, this city council approved the preliminary plat back in November, December of last year. So with that, I would like to answer any questions and respond to any opposition. I guess I did have one other thing from a massing perspective. I'll show you just in comparison. I think this is kind of interesting, too. This is not, from a massing perspective, not necessarily to scale, but from a massing perspective, it shows you the difference between a 24-plex, for example, and the eight-plexes here. From a massing perspective, this shows you the difference between what's being proposed and a two-story house. As you can see, they're very similar, actually. And the footprint of the foundation's about 2,000 square feet, if I remember, or 2,200 square feet, which is really the same footprint of a single-family one-story and a single-family two-story house. But then there again is a comparison of the massing. So this is absolutely compatible with the adjacent neighborhood from a density perspective. And with that, happy to answer any questions. The rest of the team is here, and then we'll respond to opposition as well.
Thank you, Mr. Jobin. We'll save you some time. If you need any rebuttal, we'll save a few minutes of time for that. Are there any other proponents who want to be heard today? Seeing none, are there any opponents?
Good afternoon. John Prasowski, 2120 South 72nd Street. I'm here on behalf of the Grove Homeowners Association, which is the neighborhood association for the adjoining Grove development. With me here also are David Mayer and Scott Wettergren, who are officers of the HOA, and Heather Vogel from Coley-Jesson, who is the legal counsel for the SID for the Grove neighborhood. And also numerous residents of the Grove are here as well. And I'm sure that some of them will want to be heard by the council as well today. To give some orientation of where we're talking about with this site relative to the Grove, this here is the proposed development site. This is the pond that has been some, has been the source of some discussion regarding some input and comments from the NRD lately. And then also, here is the Grove neighborhood bounded by 192nd Street on the west, stretching to 180th on the east, and immediately to the south and to the east of the proposed project here. I would also point out that across from the development site that we're talking about today, this right here is the site of the proposed Pacific Village apartment project that has been the subject of quite a bit of scrutiny by this council and was on the meeting agenda in the April and May meetings, and is located right across the street from the site we're talking about here today. As I think the council knows from some of our prior discussions and then the preliminary plat phase, the residents of the Grove have some very significant, serious concerns about this development, both as it relates to the design and configuration of the project, but also, I guess, on a more fundamental level to begin with, just we don't think this is an appropriate and right use of this site under the master plan. And specifically, we think the master plan does not call for or allow multifamily housing at this site. Starting with that issue, you know, it's clear that this is multifamily housing. There's really no doubt about that, whether you look at it from just an ordinary understanding of the term or the zoning code definition, and Mr. Jobin just referred to it as an apartment development. And under the master plan, this is in the land use element, there are very specific guidelines about where multifamily is and is not allowed. And this just flatly is not one of those places where multifamily housing is allowed. It would be allowed in any amounts within the Dodge corridor, the Maple, the center corridor, but it's not within those areas. There also would be some multifamily allowed in varying levels depending upon the location adjacent to mixed-use developments and mixed-use zoning areas. And as you can see, that's not at all where this site is located. It's bounded on the south and the east by single-family residential housing. And so just, we think it is very clear that the master plan does not allow for multifamily housing at this site. Now, we understand that there's been an interpretation by city staff that because of what was alluded to relative to keeping densities below a certain level, below the theoretical R5 density allowed for this site, that that somehow takes it out of the provisions of the master plan guidelines regarding multifamily housing. We just think that argument is not supported by the master plan itself or any of the other ordinances and guidelines that, you know, that the city and the city council are informed by when they make these kind of decisions. And one thing that I think is worth pointing out by way of new information, since the last time this was before the council, one of the things that came up at the last council, and I think many of you were interested in hearing about, and it was new information to us that we had not been provided previously, but there were some representations made regarding as many as seven other projects around the city that have previously been approved in this manner, allowing for apartment housing, was how I understood the statements. In areas using this tool of coupling an R6 zoning with a PUD, as I said, we were not provided with that information prior to our prior meeting, but we have, since that time, had a chance to look at those projects that were being cited. And I think we believe that all of those are very distinguishable from the project that we're talking about today, and in fact, not really at all similar to what is being proposed here by way of placing what is clearly a large-scale, you know, greater-than-500-unit apartment project in a spot where the master plan does not call for multifamily housing. And I can discuss in any level of detail you'd like any of those seven projects, but I'd say in general, most of them deal with townhome projects, not with apartments like we're talking about here. Two or three of them do deal with apartments, but on a very small, less-than-100-unit scale, not the very large, you know, 522-unit project that we're dealing with here. Most of them have substantial amounts of commercial development surrounding them, directly adjacent to the property. And all of them have appropriate access to arterial streets, which this one doesn't, in our judgment. It funnels traffic through the residential neighborhood in a way that these other developments don't. So as I said, I'd be happy to go into detail on any of those issues, but suffice it to say that we're not aware of any other projects like this one that are allowing sort of the wedging of a very large-scale, high-unit apartment development into a place where master plan does not call for multifamily housing. Also relevant to the issue of why the planning department is supportive of this project is the notion that what's being proposed here really is no more dense than what an R5 project would be at this site. And I guess, again, in our judgment, that just really isn't the case. Theoretically, you know, the number of units per acre, you could get as many units as they're saying that they're proposing for this site. But in actuality, with the particularities of this site, we've asked an engineer to take a look at this, and, you know, with the direction of this particular site, these, you know, roughly 40 acres, how many units could you possibly get onto the site with an R5 zoning and with an R5 project? And what you see here is a representative example of what we came up with, which essentially shows, you know, a maximum of 140 duplex or townhome lots for a maximum of 280 units if this site was, if this particular site was actually developed to its maximum density under an R5 zoning. So, you know, what you can see here is, in our judgment, you know, this is essentially, you know, disregarding and sort of turning upside down the master plan requirements about where multifamily is supposed to be by, in fact, in sort of a backdoor way, sort of getting actually more units than they possibly could get at any site that was slated properly for multifamily development, given that if you're not in that Dodge or Maple or center corridor, 500 is the absolute maximum units you could get. Here, we're talking about 522 in a site that's not even properly suited for multifamily. I'll mention briefly also the issues with the NRD, which led to the layover of this matter from the May 20th council meeting. Based upon our discussions with the NRD, we understand that there has been some progress made. But we also understand there are some significant issues that are being worked out and finalized. This morning, I understood that there's an interlocal agreement that's being, you know, worked on. That's something that we have never seen. The residents do have some concerns about the impact on their neighborhood from issues involving that, the dam site that's on the property that's under consideration for development. So that's something that we just don't have any information on exactly what's happening with that site. And frankly, the subdivision agreement that we saw for the first time when it was, you know, showing up on the city council's agenda here recently, frankly, is a little bit confusing as to who exactly it is that's responsible for that ownership and maintenance of that site going forward. So that is one area of, I guess, concern or an unknown factor for the neighbors. And turning briefly then, so to begin with, fundamentally, we don't think this is an appropriate use of this site. But in addition to that, there are a number of concerns that the neighbors have regarding the design and the configuration. that the neighbors have regarding the design and the configuration of the site, most of which relate to traffic and access issues. There's a concern about the lack of any kind of a direct access or an appropriate access without going through the Grove neighborhood to 192nd Street. Also, there's concern about the lack of any kind of definite and current improvement of the northerly extension of 190th Street, which is shown, shown here on their site plan, but is not something they plan on do, doing until any kind of future phase of this for the, for the lot up here. There's also great concern about safety issues related to children and also weather-related issues, which I'm sure some of the residents can speak more about relative to this Jones Street connection, which feeds traffic from the apartment side directly into the Grove neighborhood. There are also a number of concerns the neighbors have regarding the proximity of this kind of a large-scale, what we would view as, as high-density project going in right next to the, the single-family neighborhood. For example, you'll see many spots on here where there are striped parking spaces, essentially small parking lots that are right out somebody's front door, front porch, back, back deck. You can see right here, the proximity from this lot's front porch to those parking spaces right there. The whole row of lots here will have their backyards looking out onto these parking lots here. Those are, those are concerns for the neighbors, those kind of issues of detraction from, from the view. Also, issues related to the, the noise and the commotion from the dog park and the clubhouse and the pool, which are situated close to the, to the lots on this side of the development. And so, again, in addition to the fact that we think this just isn't an appropriate use of this site to begin with, there, there are several concerns regarding the way it's been designed and, and so I would note that, I guess, in an effort to, you know, try and reach some compromise, we have reached out on a number of occasions and had discussions with the developer and its representatives, laying out, you know, some of the more significant concerns and some possible solutions that we saw to getting to a point where, you know, nobody's going to like this project necessarily going in here, but get it to a point where it was more, you know, acceptable to the neighborhood and something that they could kind of get used to. And I'd have to say, Mr. Jobin said that they made a number of concessions, you know, putting that in context, all of those things that he referred to were things that happened based upon one neighborhood meeting that occurred last August prior to the very first planning board meeting. It happened before most of the, or many of the neighbors had any notice of this project. It happened before the neighbors were in any fashion organized, in any fashion involved with legal counsel or engineers to advise them. So, they, they did, you know, apparently make some changes to the original plan based upon that initial neighborhood meeting, but I can tell you that since those very first initial items, all of our, you know, requests for any kind of compromise or alteration have not been met with any kind of, you know, the spirit of compromise, I would say. So, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. We certainly would urge you to vote to deny the approvals that are being sought here today. I believe some of the others here present would like to speak, but I'd certainly answer any questions you would have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard?
Good afternoon. Heather Vogel Anderson of the Coley-Jesson Law Firm, 1125 South 103rd Street, Suite 800, on behalf of SID 438, the SID for the Grove. Obviously, the SID is also opposed to this project. Their main concerns relate to what they consider to be a high-density issue and the effect that will have on the, the roads that will be involved and, and related from the neighborhood in this project, and also the safety issues that are concerned. We share many of the same concerns and many of the same arguments as the homeowners association. And so, in an effort for brevity, we won't repeat or, or go into all of those arguments again. However, we would like to touch on a brief, a few issues, particularly in Mr. Jobin's comments. He, he at one point said during his comments that the, based on some code provisions and those things, there are, it takes it to some degree outside of the master plan and not all of those requirements have to be met. And then in another sentence said that all of the requirements of the master plan are being met. And if I, if I heard that incorrectly, I apologize, but my understanding is the contention has always been that this meets the requirements of the master plan by the city, and we would disagree with that argument, mainly and primarily because this appears to us to be very clearly multifamily housing. The provision that provides for low density and the other category in that provision specifically refers to townhomes, those kind of things. To say, so to say that, that this is essentially townhomes flipped the other direction, I, we have not seen, as Mr. Prasowski indicated, a development where there's townhomes at this level or this amount, and, and that townhome category is specifically allowed in the low density. So to use the townhome example as the basis for why it qualifies under the other, we don't think that precedent exists that's been used as the basis. The president argued is, well, there's these other projects that are just like this, so we should be allowed to do it. Well, a number of those are examples, are townhome examples. That provision is specifically allowed for in low density. So, to use that as a basis for saying that it qualifies in the other category does not seem logical to us. In addition, on the legal side of the issue, it is, I think at its simplest level, a bit baffling to us how, by calling this the other category in low density, they can get a development that has more than 500 apartments in the location, but if they were under the multifamily and were outside the corridor, even if they were next to mixed-use, even if this was the proper location for it, the most they would get was 500. So now, by backdooring it through the low-density provision, they're getting over 500, I think 529, or over 522 was referred to as the number of units potentially to the phases. So we're over 500 by calling it low-density, but it were, if it were under the medium-high-density provision, they couldn't get over 500 because of its location. Just seems a bit baffling to us. And so for those legal arguments and in addition, those raised by Mr. Prasowski, the SID 438 would ask that this project be voted down. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who, who wish to be heard? If we could, as you come forward too, if you would try real hard not to go over any arguments that have already been made, we, we want to hear from everyone, but, you know, we don't want to hear the redundancy. So if you, you know, if you have some new things to add or whatever, we'd appreciate that.
Absolutely. Good afternoon. My name is David Mayer, 18520 Jackson Circle. I'm a resident of the Grove. I also serve on the, as the vice president of the homeowners association for the Grove, actively involved in working with the homeowners association for the Grove Villas, which is near this location. I sit on the board of the SID 438, and I also happen to be an attorney with Coley-Jesson, although that is not my role here today. I serve the two hats I mentioned, as vice president of the HOA and as a board member of the SID 438. It's pretty simple. We strongly oppose this development. We're not opposed to development. I think we said that before. We just think that this is the wrong place for this particular development. We want to make that clear because there's, I think, a stereotype that people oppose apartment complexes. That's not the case here. We are opposing the fact that this does not comply with the master plan. There's a process and a purpose to that master plan, and we don't think that that's being complied with in this case. We appreciate the creative arguments of the, of Mr. Jobin and his, his client, but we think he's, we think they're skirting the system. And so, for the same arguments, those technical arguments you heard before, by our attorneys, we think that this should be voted down. We've made good faith efforts to oppose this at every level. We've gathered groups of residents. There's over 200 residents on a, on an emailing list. We have a, a strong contingent here with us today that we've had a contingent of residents throughout this process. We've tried to work with the developer and, and their legal counsel to come up with ways in which we can address our concerns. Those concerns specifically relate to the fact that this doesn't comply with the master plan. But you get beyond that and you're going to hear from the residents, you start talking about things like traffic control measures. That's one of the things we proposed. We think that this is going to create traffic issues. We understand that there's been traffic studies done and that doesn't show it. We have people here that would beg to differ, those of us who live in this, this subdivision. We've asked to participate in landscaping. That was something that was discussed originally with us after our first meeting so that we could maybe just pick some trees so the people that have to look at those parking lots may have a, an opportunity to choose what sort of trees are, are in their backyard so they maybe get away from some of those parking lots in their backyards. We also talked about eliminating some of the parking spaces, and we weren't talking about a, a large number of parking spaces. We were talking about a few to get them further away from these people's homes that put their faith that, that there would be an appropriate development in this area. They admitted last time it was overparked, so again, I, you know, thought that that was a fairly reasonable request. We were met with the, with a no on that. We asked for the, the dog park, which was moved, again, in closer proximity to people's yards to be reduced. That did not happen. And so, you know, the next step was to look at the drainage issues. Again, we're talking practical issues here. The, the NRD issues remain a concern. We haven't seen the plans for the, the holding pond. We're concerned that it might need to be resized, it might need to be maintained, et cetera. Again, we have not been provided sufficient information on that as well from a practical standpoint. In any event, we have an organized group here. We appreciate the process. We appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you and, and let you know our story, the way we feel, the, the people that are going to live here, live with this development. We've worked to educate and inform all interested parties as to the issues. We remain concerned, and we're continuing to explore all available legal remedies in connection with this process because we do think that it does not comply with the city master plan, point blank. Feel like that has real teeth, and we appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you. I think there's a few residents that want to express some additional practical concerns. Hope I didn't cover too much more than what's already been covered and appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents? Can I show, can I see a hand of how many others want to testify today?
Come on down. Somebody come up.
Okay. If you want to just get in line, that would, that would facilitate things a little bit faster. Come on up and get in line.
Hi, my name is Susan Nicely. I live at 930 South 192nd Street, and I come to you today as a neighbor to this property. We're across the street, and I've never been a part of any meetings with the developers. I've never been asked to be a part of, I've not had any communication with them. They've not asked my opinion on any of, any of the developments. So, I'm just a little bit annoyed with that fact, but I'll give them some credit for maybe overlooking the fact that I wasn't a part of the neighborhood association, but I am directly across the street, within 300 feet, and am affected by it. There's a couple of things that I wanted to address. When I look at the master plan and the guidelines and criteria of the master plan, as well as the municipal code, when it talks about multifamily housing, it, it doesn't say whether it's high-density or low-density. It strictly says multifamily housing. It says medium or high-density here, but here it says it is to be located adjacent to office, commercial, civic portions of a convenience, mixed-use area. In that case, if you were adjacent to that, you're limited to 250 units. Now, I was here about a month ago, speaking on behalf of the development on 192nd Pacific, Pacific Village, and they were being told that they were being limited in the amount of multifamily that they could have. And they were reducing the number of multifamily per acre just to be more accommodating to the neighbors. And, but yet, they were allowed 250 units. In this case, we're talking over 500 units being placed, and it's also considered a gap violation. Now, when you have a PUD, my understanding is a PUD is to provide something special, unique, that can't be provided through the master plan in any other way. In, in my opinion, this PUD does not fill that special need criteria. It doesn't pass the bar as a special need or providing a service to the community, adding 500 multifamily units within this corridor. I think at the time that this was proposed, those other proposals weren't yet on the table, so now there's a potential 1,000 units, 500 to 1,000 units going in on 192nd and Dodge, and there's a potential of 250 units that are within the master plan on 192nd Pacific. So this 500 is additional to whatever the city master plan does allow for. Therefore, my feeling is the corridor here, let me see if I can get orientation on this to go the right direction, oh, sorry, so we can all kind of get our bearings here. So, I've got 192nd Street, this is going west, and this is going north this way. So, what we're looking at here is Leavenworth Street is a very narrow neighborhood corridor. Right now, on, in this development, we have some apartments that have been put in here recently. These people have private parking garages, two, two-car garage, as well as a private, private parking lot back here, yet they actually park on the street often. I mean, that, that street is lined with cars. So in this situation, if you're putting already surface parking, which to me seems like an obscene amount for this area, it, it should not be that level of surface parking and, and the activity that goes along with that. There will also be cars that will be parking on the perimeter of this development, even though they do provide, people just don't always follow it, maybe guests come, I don't know why. So you've got traffic flowing out 190th Street to 189th and Pacific, and at that point, it's a busy intersection here, you're mixed-use, so these people are going this way to go to the gas station. So they're going through the neighborhood to get to the gas station, dry cleaner, whoever else ends up going in for the mixed-use there. These people that live on Jones Street here, they travel going this direction. In order to get to the Hy-Vee that's down to the east, they go Jones Street around through here and on Leavenworth. So the folks back in this part of this development will potentially travel then through the neighborhood to get to the Hy-Vee. So, these people are working-class folks. They're going to be accessing Hy-Vee, Walmart, Millard's, or Elkhorn South High School, and to do that, they're going to be coming out into, onto this Leavenworth Street here to get up to 192nd. And again, we have at, at the meeting in May, when we talked about the development of the Pacific Ridge, or Village, I'm sorry, a traffic concern. And I would, I would ask that there would be at least another study, a second look maybe, a little closer at what the impact this 500, 522 units is going to have for these people that are going to be accessing, heading towards Pacific Street as well as Center Street and all of the conveniences that they will be accessing through that intersection. This developer here was required to improve the street. He was required to add an additional lane on 192nd Street. Excuse the tremor in my voice, I'm not used to doing this, I'm just a mom. And also on Pacific Street, he was asked to improve that road there. I have not seen any improvement of roads for the benefit of the neighborhood or 192nd Street with a 500-plus additional multifamily. I don't want to repeat much else that's been said, other than that by putting another 500 multifamily units, you preclude the opportunity for diversity within this neighborhood because you're already getting multifamily that's allowed within the master plan. Now, whatever else, the master plan had a design of growth, this is precluding what that design would be by infusing another 500-plus units of multifamily. And that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next opponent, please.
Good afternoon. Judy Bodowitz, 18726 Leavenworth Street. I'd like to start off from what Mr. Jobin first started off with, and talking about the initial meeting. All the residents within 300 feet received this little postcard that told them to come to an information meeting and that we could ask questions. And that's all it said that we were going to do. Not to mention, it told us that it was on the southeast corner instead of the northeast corner. So we're going to this meeting, not really knowing, because there's already So we're going to this meeting, not really knowing, because there's already a house on the southeast corner. So we go to the meeting. Of course, we had a lot of questions because they, you know, he had the design that he showed earlier, and he presented it as executive apartments. So a lot of us questioned what makes it an executive apartment, because we thought, if I was an executive, I'd want to have my garage attached, and these all have out garages, not even attached to the apartments, and there's not even enough garages for all the units. Anyway, he went over his presentation, gave us the information of what it was, talked We asked about the traffic. He showed this was the original... What... Oh, what I was going to say, too, is when we got the card, we received the card on August 21st. Okay, this is a little postcard. Received the postcard on August 21st. Some people got it on August 22nd. The meeting was on August 26th. So we weren't even given... We were given a few days' notice to even know about this. And at that time of the year, many people are on vacation. So it was limited on how many people, you know, could even... that knew about it at that time. And then, this was the design that was presented to us at the meeting. Now, according to the planning department, who followed up with a letter after the postcard, it said 264 units. That's what we were told was Phase 1, 264, and that's what's on this design. We asked about the North Road, and Mr. Jobin told us that, well, that will be later after Phase 2. But then, as he even mentioned today, there is no guarantee that Phase 2 is even going to happen. So that... This is how the map should look, because that road should not even be there, because we don't even know that it will ever, ever appear. So from that meeting, I guess they took some concerns that were, you know, they disregarded the traffic concerns, but they took the concern about the clubhouse, as he said, and they took the concern about the east setbacks, which he also said. But there was also the concerns about the south setbacks for the people that back up on the south side. There was concerns about what kind of trees would be put there to buffer the areas. There were the concerns about why there were so many parking spaces. But I'd also like to go to the planning board minutes, and this is right from Mr. Jobin, that it states in the planning board minutes that Phase 1 is 20.295 acres for 272 units. So we go to this meeting, and then we find out it's not 264, it's 272. Well, it says, according to the minutes, that the density is 10.94. Well, according to my calculator, that's 13.4 units per acre, not 10.94 as is stated in the minutes. Also, for Phase 2, it says 11.088 acres for 250 market. And of course, this is the first time we ever see that it's market rate, because we were told executive apartments. Anyway, it says that that's 15.66 units per acre. But if you calculate that out, it's really 22.55 units per acre, which, when we're talking about low density, there is no way that 22 units an acre can be considered low density, let alone the other acres or other units. And I know he keeps pointing out, too, green space. Well, green space does not equal low density. Low density is the low, you know, number of units. It doesn't have anything to do with green space. So I just wanted to point out that there's been a lot of misleading information and even calculations, you know, as was pointed out in the planning board minutes, and this is just right from the planning board minutes, which is a concern, again, as he said, there's no guarantee that Phase 2 will go in. So what happens if Phase 2 doesn't? The North Road doesn't ever happen, and then we deal with all this traffic going through the subdivision forever. Not to mention, if Phase 2 does go in as it's planned, that's not low density. That's medium to high density at 250 units on 11 acres. And John Prozowski already brought up the comparables that... The comparables that Mr. Jobin brought up a few meetings ago are no way comparables. Most of them have to do with townhouses, and this is in no way a townhouse. These are apartments. And, let's see. The last thing is, over the last couple of months, many of us have been watching as Pacific Village was presented to you. And we would like the same consideration that you gave the residents, which are really real close to us, but we're within the 300 feet, so we weren't notified about it. But the same consideration that you gave the ridges and Pacific Point and Plum Ridge, working with their developer, because their developer has been, you know, has been willing to work with them to have a development there that's not only good for the residents, but that will be good for the apartment residents as well. And that's what we're, you know, we're asking that you will take that into consideration, too, because the developer has not... You know, they had their one meeting with us, and that was it, and it wasn't even... We asked questions, but we weren't able to really give them any feedback. And although he said, at the first planning board meeting, he was going to have another meeting with us to share the concerns with all the residents, but that never materialized. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but I think that's all I have for right now.
Thank you. And I think we have one more opponent.
Yes. Okay. Hi, my name is Ann Lefler, and it's 1-885-7-JONESSTREET. And is that all you need?
Yes.
The street address. Okay, I have some pictures of Jones Street. And again, we do have great traffic concerns, and I want, you know, as a resident who lives there, I would like you to kind of maybe put yourself in our place. If you were living on this street, and I have a couple of pictures, how do I...
Here it comes.
Okay, this is a picture of Jones Street on a given date. We are going to add, according to Mr. Jobin's calculations, out of 200 and now 72 apartments rather than 264, we are going to have 161 cars a day going up and down this street. Okay, this is... And even if it's half of that, that's an additional 80 cars a day going up and down right here every day with no guarantee of a future exit onto 192nd Street. The other exit is Leavenworth Street, which is a similar street. It's very narrow. This was taken by Mary Branson over there. And this is another day on Jones Street. Now, this time, they had some working, you know, vehicles there, but this is another day on Jones Street. So you're going to add another 60 cars a day with all the children playing up and down this street. Would you like to live there? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Are there any other opponents?
Sorry, I was a little last minute there.
Okay.
Good afternoon. Nathan Victor, 806 South 190th Avenue. I'm lucky enough to live just south of Leavenworth on 190th Avenue. So about two weeks before the notice, I purchased a lot across the street from me to get a nice little walkout to the east, and now I find out that the development's coming in, and that's going to be the main street into 270-some units now. So I guess probably the most disheartening thing is, I see my neighbors putting their homes up for sale, because they don't know what the value is going to happen. And, you know, some of those are brand-new. Some of them have been there three, four years. But we're a little worried about, you know, what lower-end apartment-type units are going to do to the value of the home. I have three children. Leavenworth is dangerous already, the way that it is. As soon as you add all that traffic, I can tell you that it's going to be a lot more dangerous. So I'd ask you to deny it if you would, please. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jobin, a couple of minutes of rebuttal time, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road. Actually, take a little bit of time here to go through some of these issues. But the master plan has been used with the R6, R5 density in five different occasions. And these are just ones that we could pull up right away. And to say that they were distinguishable from this one is just not true. I mean, Butler Ridge, for example, I did that. That's got apartment-style apartments. There's that... Actually, that's more dense than this. Another one that I would call your attention to is one that came before this council on December 10th of 2013, this very council here, and it was approved 7-0 with a unit-per-acre more dense than this project. So we have had this type of zoning in many different instances where you have R6, PUD with the R5 densities. It goes to the density. This is 133rd and Laramore was where that was. This goes to the density. It doesn't go to the housing type. The housing type is set forth in the master plan. Other forms of housing, you could actually say that this is, in some respects, it happens to be an A-plux, but it's, in some respects, a row house. It just happens to be vertically stacked. So you do get to the density. And the unlimited number of apartment units in the master plan is Maple Street, Dodge Street, Center Street, and I think Q Street as well was recently added as a corridor with unlimited density. That's not what we're talking about here at all. We're talking about low-density residential housing that meets the requirements of the master plan in the sense that it's other forms of housing. As far as the NRD issues are concerned, actually, this has been around since the beginning. This was part of the original recommendation of the planning department. The pond, the retention pond in that Outlet A is actually in a grave state of disrepair. It's been filled in. There's silt. This particular project is going to correct that problem. There's going to be dredging. It's going to be repaired and be brought to a much better standard. This is all in conformance with what the Public Works Department wants, the planning department wants, and also the NRD wants. We are working with the NRD for an interlocal cooperation agreement to come up with the maintenance, operation, and management requirements for this particular pond. We are essentially in agreement between us and the NRD as to how that's going to take place. It so happened their attorney couldn't get to the interlocal cooperation agreement in time, so I actually drafted it, but it calls for all the maintenance, operation, and management responsibilities to fall onto this district. But it's going to be a much better situation than it currently is out there, because it's now been filled in. So there's no issue with the NRD whatsoever. It's going to be a much better situation with this development than it is without it. As far as the traffic access issues, Public Works concurs with the traffic analysis that was done. There's no impact whatsoever on the adjacent residential streets with this particular development. Why? Because it's low-density residential housing. It's no different than what they have. These are all public streets. In fact, if you look, these connections, street connections, were... This is Jones Street going into the project. This is Leavenworth Street going into the project. I mean, these stubs were meant to make these connection points. I mean, these streets that you have in the grove were meant to accept traffic from this particular development. And it being low-density, not high-density, there is no adverse impact on it. As far as cars parking on the street, you can put up no parking signs to fix that problem. As far as working with the neighbors, you know, we did work with the neighbors, and I met with Mr. Prozowski and Mr. Mayor and Heather as well, and what they wanted to see, and we couldn't obviously do, is they wanted to see a roundabout. I mean, it wasn't just some additional landscaping. We're still willing to work with the neighbors on additional landscaping. That's not an issue. I mean, if they want additional trees or whatever, we're happy to work with them on that. That's something that can be done at any point in time, and we said we'd still be willing to talk to them. What they wanted is they wanted a roundabout here at Leavenworth in this site, which obviously you couldn't do, and it would be a needless waste of public funds because there's no need for it as some kind of a traffic call-me device. There's no need for it. They also wanted us to cut off the access at Jones. That's not a good thing either, because our master plan calls for connectivity. Connectivity is important for a number of reasons, as Public Works would talk about, you know, lane miles traveled, pollution, all sorts of costs associated with making people go out onto the major arteries as opposed to making a straight connection. But to think that people are going to race through the grove to get to Hy-Vee is ridiculous. I mean, people don't do that. So those were the real issues that they wanted, and short of withdrawing the matter of this case, I mean, we couldn't live with those things. And we're already at a low density. Again, this density for the first phase is 10.94 units an acre. And, you know, I did the math here, just sitting here right now, and, you know, if we were a true R6, we could have 783 units, which is 261... We're 261 units less than what the R5 is called for. And that's based upon a minimum 2,000 square foot per unit basis. Well, we're substantially less than that, at 3,000 square foot. So I think some of their math is off, and I'd be happy to sit down and go through the math and how it works, and I'm sure Planning Department would as well. But their math is just plain off. It's 10.94 units an acre in the first phase. The second phase is a little more dense. Why? Because we can take all the area and put some of the density into the second phase as opposed to the first phase. But this first phase is extremely low density. As far as Ms. Nicely is concerned, I mean, you know, you were all here two weeks ago, and she actually testified she had no problem with a three-story building immediately next to the property line that's immediately adjacent to her own single-family residential house. So I guess I'm not sure what her motivation is here, talking about this particular low-density project across 192nd Street and certainly north of where she lives. So I'm not really sure about that one. With that, you know, I'm happy to answer any questions. Again, we were always been here to, you know, meet with the neighbors and cooperate with them, and I think we've done that. We were asked, actually, I asked at one point in time if we needed another neighborhood meeting. They said, no, we didn't think so. It was sufficient to meet with the HOA representatives, and so that's what we did. We limited the scope of the meetings because we thought that we could get more done. But again, you know, some of the deals or some of the requests were simply deal killers. You just can't live with some of those. I mean, from an increased cost perspective, from, you know, you can't lower the density. You're already at the lowest density possible. So again, this is consistent with the master plan. I'd encourage you to talk to Public Works, talk to Planning, call them up here. Mr. Elliott's here for traffic. I'm here for additional questions, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Jobin, and we'll close the public hearing. Council members? Thoughts, questions, motions? Mrs. Melton?
I do have a couple of questions. And Mr. Jobin, I think I'll direct my questions to you first, if that's all right.
Sure, thank you.
And I guess, I think the biggest question that I have today, I'm just going to go right... I have a lot of other small questions. But the big question is, and maybe somebody from Planning needs to answer this, how do we determine whether we are using unit-per-acre or number of units to determine density? Because I think that's the actual argument. Mr. Jobin, you're using the number of units per acre, which would mean we could have over 700 apartments right here outside this neighborhood, yet it looks like the land use calls for less than 500, but doesn't use units per acre.
Well, here's my quick notes, as I was sitting here. So we have 24.866 acres, okay? So you multiply that by 43,564.
Well, I don't want to interrupt you. I get how you come... How you get the math.
So how... I mean, but I guess then, how could you...
So you're...
...different on the units? Well, that's in the code. If you look at R5, here's the R5, site area per unit is 3,000 square feet minimum.
Right, but when we look at the land use, it says that you can't have more than 500 units there. And really, we could argue 250 units.
No, that's...
I guess what the argument then is... I guess what the argument then is, is whether you're saying that this is not necessarily multi-family.
That's not within the, that's not within the unlimited corridors that we're talking about. And the PUD actually brings this down to a low-density residential use. I mean, you know, maybe it's more appropriate for Mr. Fanslaw to testify about this, but I mean, that, I mean, that's, I can't say it any differently than it is. You know, the unlimited corridor, when we talk about the 500 units, that's Maple, Dodge, Center, and Q Street. This is different. This falls outside of that because it's within the low-density. It's, the master plan calls for this area to be low-density residential without regard to the form. It could be other forms. It could be duplexes, it can be, you know, townhomes, it can be other forms. This is the other forms, but the density is still the same, and that's low. I mean, I guess, I don't know how else to say that, but, Mr. Fanslaw, maybe you can help me.
Well, I mean, I think maybe we have contradictory language between the land use language and zoning language.
Dave Fanslaw, City Planning.
Thank you, Mr. Fanslaw.
Can you ask the question again?
Yeah.
Because I'm trying to wrap my hands around it as well.
So, I have Mr. Jobin telling, saying that this is low-density because of the number of units per acre. So, this is a very, let's see, how many? We said that there were 38, 38 acres total? Is that right?
Phase 1's 25 or something like that.
Okay, so, phase 1, which we're considering today, is 24.86 acres.
Okay.
And so, that equates to 10.74 units per acre.
Correct.
Which 10.74 units per acre might be low-density if we're not dealing with so many acres.
Well, correct. I mean, obviously, the bigger the site, the lower...
Right.
The more units, and maybe possibly the lower site per unit.
But yet, in the, the land use language actually says that they're going to limit, it's going to be 500 units even on the major corridors, Dodge, Maple. And they're saying that this isn't one of the major corridors. There, I mean, in my opinion, because it's not one of the major corridors, it should be less dense, which I think is what the land use language says. But yet, this is more dense if you're just talking about straight number of units, but you're not comparing the number of units per acre.
It is less, I, I'll try...
Okay.
To answer your question. It is less dense than standard multifamily development. Absolutely it is. R6, there's, we consider low-density development in the zoning code and in the land use code, but I'll specifically talk to the zoning code. Classification's R1 through R5. We don't get into multifamily zoning until we go to R6. So, and R6 allows up to 22 units per acre. And then, R7 and R8 obviously allow more than that.
So, why does the land use refer to just a straight number of units? Five, 250 versus 500?
That, that, that part of the code, I think you're, or the, of the land use plan you're reading talks about where multifamily is allowed when it's adjacent, within or adjacent to a mixed-use area. The page that was shown, I don't know, I can't remember who put it up on the overhead. But that, but that part of the master plan talked about when it's within or adjacent to a mixed-use area. And we put limitations on that. Absolutely.
But this is not adjacent to a mixed-use.
Correct.
So, are we saying we don't put any limitations on it because it's...
We put limitations on it based on site per unit and the density. And, and the area that this project is encompassing or taking up with the number of units, it's considered low-density housing.
Okay, and I appreciate that you just explained it.
Multifamily buildings, but at low-density residential densities.
Well, I appreciate that, I guess, and I'm not saying you don't make sense. You're explaining the master plan correctly, and I don't, I'm not blaming you for what the master plan says.
And I'm just trying, right, and I'm just trying to answer your question. I think last time, and I know at Planning Board, I described the, how we got here, history-wise, 2003, 2004, a developer came to us and wanted to do a certain amount of density, and I don't know if I've explained it to this council or not, but we talked about a project, we looked at what he was proposing to do, and it met low-density development regulations. And then, he asked the question, "What happens if I flip, what happens if I wanted to do a different product at this density, but I didn't want to do rural homes? I wanted to flip the buildings and have people live on one level and above them?" And the department at that time decided it shouldn't matter what type of building you're putting up as long as it is considered low-density. And so, with the R6 PUD, we take the more restrictive site development regulators from R5 and R6. So, we have shorter buildings, larger setbacks, more green space, less units. We take the more restrictive of each one of those zoning classifications when we put together a plan like this.
Well, and I'm not so sure that the master plan's language, I think it's somewhat vague. So, I understand that maybe the planning department made that decision a number of years ago, or decided to interpret that language that way. But my, the problem I have with that is I think that the planning department then should have probably moved or asked that that language be changed so that it was more clear to residents when they're purchasing their homes and they have, you know, ag land next to them, and they're trying to determine what could or could not be built there. I don't think the language is very clear.
But I guess it's kind of, it's hard to write a master plan for every specific case. What Larry showed was a document that I produced for the Planning Board. This isn't the first time that a plan like this has come to us and come to the Planning Board or City Council. So, we, we have established a policy, and we've seen it a number of times.
And again, and I don't, I'm not trying to argue with you, and I just appreciate the fact that you're explaining the master plan. So, I want you to know that that's what I'm asking you to do. But it seems, it doesn't really make sense to me that we would use a number, we would use 500 units as a number and put that on the major corridors, which is where we should have the high-dense, and we call it high-dense. But then, we change, we change depending on whether it's adjacent to a mixed-use, and then say, "Oh, well, by the way, we're just going to look at acres, and so, if a developer can just buy up that much land, we're going to go ahead and let them put 700 or 1,000 apartments right outside of a neighborhood."
If it meets R5 or below in density, it shouldn't matter what type of building. The, the units that you're referring to in the master plan that talk about 250, 350, and 500, those are three-story, 24 or 36-plex buildings. That's what we envision to be located adjacent to or within a mixed-use development, a mixed-use intersection. That's not this product, and that's not the product that has been approved by past Planning Boards and City Councils.
But I guess I would assume that the intent of the language for the land use, and I know you probably can't answer this, but I would have assumed that the intent for saying that they, you were going to have those larger 24-plexes just at the major corridors of Dodge and Maple, that the intent would be that you would have less dense or less number of apartments when it's not on a major corridor. I mean, that would be what I would have assumed their intent would have been.
I think, I think that's what you have before you, is a less dense development than what you would have at the intersection.
Well, and I guess my, my interpretation of dense, or my definition of dense, 532 apartments isn't dense unless, unless you try and manipulate the numbers to go with unit per acre. Then you say it's low-density, yet the developer, if the developer buys enough land, then we'll go ahead and call it low-density.
Well, I guess if the developer bought more land, they could put more duplexes or single-family homes on it as well. But it, the zoning code speaks to zoning districts and the site per unit.
But if we were to do single-family homes, I believe that there would only, we would only have about 280 on the same area of land.
Staff has never reviewed an application for that.
And I appreciate, and I don't, I've put you on the spot.
No, that's perfectly fine.
I think long enough, I just wanted you to help, help me understand the language, and I think you did that. But I, I may want to call Heather back up because I think she, she kind of explained the land use, and I would like her to hopefully address my question as well.
Maybe I can add something too, if you don't mind. I mean, the reason why...
Hold on, we're going to keep this respectful. We're going to do that. So, let's, let's go ahead and, and, they asked you a question, I think you ought to be responsive to the question, and then we'll go from there.
Sure, thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
Larry, I will ask, Mr. Jobin, I'll ask you after Heather speaks, if you could come back up.
Thank you. Heather Vogli Anderson, 1125 South 103rd Street, Suite 800. In regard to the argument, I think council, you have it exactly right. The issue is, is that the attempt is to skirt the master plan to use this number of units per acre when the master plan clearly defines, and now the city has called it, the Planning Department has called it multifamily housing, just now, called it multifamily housing. And so, we were using the highest number to say this is even higher than the highest number that could have been used if it was in a certain corridor next to mixed-use. We don't even have that here. The master plan says that multifamily housing located outside of the West Maple, West Dodge, or West Center corridors and away from office, commercial, or civic portions of mixed-use area will be considered as part of a group and limited to 100 units unless it is more than a quarter mile away from the nearest multifamily development. So, what we were attempting to demonstrate by using the 500 number was exactly what you're indicating, is that now, even, by the way, if you take this to a per-acre issue, then you can get more than you would have even if you were in the corridor. How can that be reasonable? How can that make sense? And you're exactly right, we did have an engineer study, and we had an engineer study make a determination and determine how many townhomes could fit in here, because they keep wanting to say townhomes flipped on their side. The maximum number you could have gotten with that in Phase 1 and Phase 2 is 280. So, to say that this is townhomes flipped on its side, and then somehow we can go to a per-acre analysis, it's not townhomes flipped on its side, because if that was the case, you'd get 280 in the most densely created, less green space you could get in both phases. And that was an engineer report we had prepared. So, I have to tell you, I think you have it exactly right. That's exactly our position. How in the world, when the master plan says that even in the places in these corridors, when it's next to mixed-use, you could only have 500, but then to say, in this, where it's not that corridor, where it's not next to mixed-use, you can put 500 in some apartments in here just because we're going to take it to a per-acre calculation? It's not what the master plan says. And to try and squeeze it into this other category to make it work and call it, you know, similar to townhomes flipped on their sides, it's not. And all's we need to know to see that is this engineering report that says no. If that would happen, if it were townhomes flipped on its side, it'd be 280. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Mr. Jobin, would you like a moment to respond?
Sure. I mean, that's just, I mean, honestly, it's just simply not true. I mean, the site regulators are based upon the units that you can have in the particular zoning classification, based upon a minimum square footage requirement. In the R5, it's 3,000 minimum square feet per acre, okay? That's, that determines, the configuration of the housing is irrelevant. The density is the same regardless of whether you stack them on top or put them side by side. You still have the ability to put the 3,000 square feet minimum requirement in a particular area. As far as what the master plan intended as far as the unlimited apartments, if you look at West Maple, West Dodge, Center, and Q, I think what we were trying to get at, or what the master plan was trying to get at, is those are on major corridors. And what the idea was, is that they didn't want to have these types of arguments on major arterials within the city, that it made sense to have maximize, to maximize density on those particular corridors. That doesn't mean you can't have apartments anywhere else besides those major corridors. That doesn't make any sense. And as long as you meet the density requirements of the master plan, and then you take the master plan, which is this guideline over here, and then you apply the specific regulations of R5, R6, and you take the most restrictive of those, and you apply it to a particular area, and you can put the number of units that we're contemplating on here. Why? Because it's consistent with the master plan. It's an other form of housing. It, you know, we're getting caught up in this, well, multifamily, not multifamily, row houses versus stacked on top of each other. That's not the point. The point is density. The density is consistent regardless of what type of housing you put on this particular area. But in no way do I believe the master plan says you can only have apartments on those four corridors within the city of Omaha. It doesn't make any sense.
Well, so, I don't, I don't even think the residents are arguing that at all. What they're, what they're arguing is they're saying that the land use language calls for or allows for what they refer to as high-density, the 500 units, on the major corridors. So, one could only assume that they would want something less if it's not on the major corridors. I mean, it, I would have assumed that that language was to somehow protect Leavenworth and Ida and, you know, some of the, not the major arterials.
But no one's trying to skirt the master plan here, and I think that's been evidenced by five different approvals by this council over time. And if you look at the R6 zoning, if we were going to apply those density requirements that would be allowed in R6, you would be able to construct 783 units. Well, we're using the R5 site regulator, which is a lower density, and that's where you get the 522 units, because instead of 2,000 square feet per unit, you have 3,000 square feet per unit, which has always consistently been interpreted by the planning department to be low-density. So, I guess we're changing, if we decided to go this path, we're changing, you know, longstanding policies and principles that have been applied for a long time and a lot of people have relied on.
No, but I think the problem is, is we're not, the problem is, there may be, these may be these longstanding policies, but the language wasn't clear. No one, I mean, it, maybe the, maybe the group in planning and yourself, because you're involved in a number of these projects, all of you know this or have assumed this, but the residents of the Grove, because it's not written there, had, didn't have any warning, didn't have any idea. I mean, that's, that's why we have the...
But when it gets down to it, what's wrong with this particular project in relationship to the Grove? I mean, there's nothing wrong with this particular project. It, it's a good project, it's a PUD, the material choices are good, it provides for housing that's needed in this part of Omaha. I mean, diversity of housing's a good thing. So, I mean, I guess, I don't know why we're throwing this thing out, or, you know, seemingly throwing this type of development out, just simply because it's adjacent to a single-family neighborhood when it's in fact compatible with it.
Well, my argument is the plain language, the plain language does not allow multifamily housing at the site. Maybe the planning department and other people have interpreted the language listed to include these types of apartments, but I think what needs to happen then is that language needs to be changed first.
But I don't think that is the true interpretation. I mean, I don't think that's true, what you're saying. I mean, I just don't think that that's, I mean, the master plan doesn't say that you can't have, you have to have apartments only on these four quarters, and you can't have them anywhere else.
But we're not arguing that at all. I'm not arguing that you can only have apartments.
But we're talking about density, and that's what, the density is the important issue here, and we meet the density of R5 or lower, which is a low-density type residential housing. The land, the future land use map calls for this area to be low-density housing. Well, this is low-density housing. So, I guess I, we're caught up in all these semantics, and we're trying to read this like you would read a brief or a case, you know, case law, but that's not the way you read these things. I mean, it's all within the confines of policy, and we're not trying to be overly restrictive here. We're trying to get, you know, developments to happen that are consistent with the master plan, to follow policies and principles that have been established, I mean, on five different occasions here in the last couple of years.
Well, number one...
Including in December of last year.
Okay, well, there may have been, but here, I don't, I don't think the neighbors would be up in arms if we had 280 units going in. I mean, they, they may still not want them, and they, they may still be here objecting to them, but I, I wouldn't be able necessarily to vote no on the project because it does fit the language of the master plan. I think that there's two interpretations that you can have, and I think the language is vague. And I am in the habit of reading cases and statutes on a daily basis. I apologize for...
As I am, but in this arena, it's a little different because the master plan's a guideline, it's a policy, it's, you know, it's not the law necessarily. I mean, you try to follow it, but what you try to do is, you know, follow principles and guidelines that make sense with, with the code that we have and with the master plan that we have. But I mean, the idea is to provide some certainty in the marketplace, and when people look at this particular development here, and you look at the master plan, it calls for low-density, and it's been a longstanding policy and principle that anything under 15 units is low-density, or under 20 units is...
Fourteen.
Fourteen and a half. Anything under 14 and a half has always been considered low-density by the city for as long as I can remember, and then, and we have that. I mean, that, I don't know what to take from that.
Well, but in my opinion, I actually think we owe it both to developers in our town and to the residents in the city of Omaha, or outside the city of Omaha where we control the zoning, but I actually think we owe it to all of them to actually provide language that isn't as vague as this language is, to where you can have two completely different interpretations over the number of apartments, which go from 280 to 534? 32. 532. I, I mean, so, it depends upon... I mean, so it depends upon what language you're using. And so, to me, I feel bad for a developer that's going to rely upon one interpretation when this council or the residents are relying on a different interpretation. And I'll be honest with you, I do not think that this language is clear. I understand it's clear to you, and we're going to have to agree to disagree on it, but that's not what it says. So I think, I think the planning department, if they want this interpretation, even though this is what they have been doing, they're going to need to make it clear for the rest of us who aren't involved in development.
But that's why we've, we get recommendations, and we have pre-application meetings, and we meet with the neighbors, we meet with the planning department, we meet with the public works department, we go to the planning board on a preliminary plat, we come to the council preliminary plat, and we have all these discussions, and then we go back to the planning board on the final plat, and then we come back here on the final plat in the zoning matters. I mean, this has all been discussed.
Well, but you know what? That brings up another point. I think we also mentioned at the preliminary plat, I mean, has there only been one meeting, and it was last August with the neighbors?
No. But I was told that we didn't need another one by the representatives of the HOA, and that is true. Isn't that fair? I'm not, I wouldn't, I'm not telling, I'm not lying here. I was told by the HOA attorney and the SID attorney that they didn't need to meet with the neighbors, again, that we thought we'd get more done if we could meet just quietly in my office, and we did that. And we did that a couple times.
So did you meet with the attorneys for the HOA and the SID?
And the president, and the president of the HOA. Yeah, I didn't, you know, I mean, we were, I said we'd be happy to have another full-blown meeting if you want, and they said, no, I don't think that's necessary. So that's where we are.
I may have some other questions. I'll let it go to my other. Oh, yeah, Mr. Fanzel, come on.
Amy, I just, Dave Fanzel, City Planning. I guess I'd just like to make sure you understand that the R6 part of this has nothing to do with the density of the project. It has to do with the building type. And so, when the department, I mentioned a number of years ago, had a policy that we would allow the stacking of units, we did that to provide for the other, you're talking about the master plan, we did that so we could provide for the other forms of low-density housing that the master plan calls for in these areas, but just with a different style. Just so you know.
No, and I appreciate that, and I have to admit, I walked in here today prepared to support this project. But with the information that was provided today in regards to the difference between units per acre versus the building type, I mean, I guess to me, if it takes this long for myself to try and understand the difference, I'm not sure how the residents who have, you know, purchased homes in reliance upon what could go, what they believed could or could not go up there, I don't necessarily think it's fair to them.
Okay.
And I appreciate you explaining.
And we've had numerous meetings with their representatives going back to last summer, and we've had planning board meetings, and we're open to those discussions, and we thought we have answered all those questions.
Has the planning board?
Maybe not to their liking, but.
Well, sure, but has the planning board discussed making changes to the language so that it would be more consistent?
No, it's the first I've heard about it. We've never talked about it because it's, to tell the truth, it's never been that big of an issue.
Okay.
We felt, we felt that going back a number of years, that those cases made sense, met the intent of the master plan, met the intent of the zoning code, and we've had public hearings. I've gone to neighborhood meetings to discuss the issue, so we've been out there on this issue as much as we can, or as much as we have on most, any other issue, so.
Okay. Now, thank you, thank you for all you do.
Yeah, no problem.
One more light. There's been a motion, motion approved. There's a motion and a second to approve. We got another light on. Councilmember Paul.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could I have you come up again? I just have a question.
Sure.
Number one, I'm not against development. I think these developers, they need a certain thing to make it work. I am not, not against the master plan at all, but I do have some questions. And the one I think about being relatively new, I'm not indoctrinated into automatically saying yes without really questioning, because I don't have probably enough of the information. But this is what has happened to me today. I have one group of attorneys telling me it does meet the plan, I have another group of attorneys telling me it does not. In your opinion, you say this development meets the master plan.
I would say trust your staff, and yes, it meets the intent of the master plan.
It doesn't mean I don't trust you.
No, I know, I'm just saying, it's, we're tasked, our jobs, planning, public works, that's what we get paid for. We get paid to interpret the zoning code, we get paid to interpret the land use plan and the master plan. So I'm not saying you don't trust us, I'm just saying, we're the professionals on staff who look at this stuff. If it didn't meet, I think I mentioned this, maybe this case or another case, if it didn't meet the intent of the master plan, I wouldn't be standing up before you telling you that it did, or it probably would never get to you, so. With our favorable recommendation, that is.
But do you see where I'm in a little bit of a quandary? Just because like, not too long ago, we had another issue on 192nd, and then we had an issue with CAS. I have an issue just with density. I understand that we need density, because I know we have some people who really think it's significant. But as I drive through my district, District 5, I see lots of apartments.
Rich, I guess I would, we're here. If you have questions, if you want to know more about these developments, if you want briefings on the master plan, we're here five days a week. I'd be happy to come down and discuss any issues with you. I mean, you said yourself you're new. If there's questions you have about it, we're here.
I'm new, but I'm not done.
I totally agree.
But the question I have is, when does this master plan, how often is that reviewed? I've asked this question before, but I'm just.
Reviewed or amended or?
Amended, well, it's amended apparently on a regular basis. Land use is.
It is. It's, there's, you know, I don't have it in front of me, but there, since 19, since the mid-'90s when it was adopted, it's been amended a number of times.
Right.
I mean, we didn't, it's, times change, things change, policies change, and we've made amendments to the master plan. We've also adopted new elements since the mid-'90s as well, so.
And the only reason I'm doing that is for the people who are out in the audience, I want them to know if there are other steps they feel they need to go, I'm just sort of laying the groundwork.
Well, sure, and anytime anything's amended or adopted, you know, if it's a major, if it's a new element to the master plan, there are public meetings that the staff holds off-site so we can get neighborhood input, and, you know, there's a public hearing process for any of the amendments. Obviously, we can't get to everyone in the city when we're amending one part of the master plan, but we're as transparent as we possibly can.
And I appreciate standing up and.
Sure, no problem.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Prasowski.
John Prasowski, 2120 South 72nd Street.
I think I heard you say in your testimony that you're willing to use all the legal remedies at your disposal to fight this. Does that include perhaps a legal remedy for an injunction should this pass?
Yeah, just to clarify, I think that was Mr. Mayor that mentioned that, but I, as his counsel, and the counsel for the HOA, I wouldn't rule that possibility out.
Okay, so you, you see this as an outsider needing to take a neutral look at the master plan to see whether or not it is conflicting?
Well, right, and I guess I would just say I agree with the interpretation that it is, the plain language does say multifamily is not allowed except in these areas, in these quantities, and quantities measured by units. So, you know, the project that's proposed for this site, under what I believe is the plain language of the master plan, is not, is not allowed at this site. And, by the way, there is, and this was alluded to before as well, there is a process for changing and amending that master plan. There's also a process on a project-specific basis for variances. None of that was done on this project, and again, the language as written, I think, is clear. There's been a different staff interpretation apparently for a number of years, but if there is, you know, a need for change to the language and a change to the interpretation, there's a process for that, and that process was never followed in this case.
Okay. Thank you very much. My position is that with Phase 1 and 2, if the total proposal had about 400 units of apartments, I would be supporting it, but I believe 522 is too dense. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. I see no more lights. We've got a motion and a second for approval. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
No.
Pauls.
No.
Thompson.
No.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It fails on a 3-3 vote. Item number, item number nine, ordinance to rezone the property located at 2611 North 138th Street, 2548, and 2606 North 137th Street from R3, single-family residential district, medium-density to R4, single-family residential district, high-density. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda, item number nine is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
I'd like to speak.
Are you a proponent or an opponent?
Opponent.
Opponent?
My name's Danny Gruppo. I live at 3304 Davenport Street. First of all, I'd just like to say that I'm amazed that you guys would waste an hour and a half of everyone's time talking about that, when there's been like four, five shootings in North Omaha the last week, there was a robbery in.
I'm going to need you to stay on the subject, please. We're talking about number nine here.
Right, I have to leave. I was going to speak in approval of number 17, the Boys Club, on 50% aims. Unfortunately, I have to leave.
It's not on the agenda right now. We're at number nine now.
Right, right. There is unemployment rate of 45% among black youth within this city, and you guys are spending all of your time.
You got to stay on the subject.
Right, you guys are spending, do you see how you're wasting your time, though?
We're zoning, we're talking about a zoning issue now, so either you're in favor of or opposed to this.
Right, do you see how you're wasting your time? Do you see how you're wasting everyone's time? You're completely ignoring.
I'm going to have to ask you to stop if you're not going to stay on the subject, please.
You're completely ignoring all of the hardest issues this city faces. You're completely ignoring the violence.
Are you going to stay on, are you going to stay on the topic?
No, I'm trying to talk about the issue that matters to me, that you guys are trying to keep me from talking about.
Then I'm going to have to dismiss you then, because we're on the subject number nine, and this has to do with zoning, it has nothing to do with any of the things that you're talking about.
Are you going to talk about the things I'm talking about?
You're on number nine.
Are you going to talk about the things I'm talking about? Are you going to talk about the things I'm talking about? Are you going to talk about gun violence in this city?
You need to be, you need to, you need to either cease or stay on number nine. I'm not going to ask you again.
Are you going to answer my question?
Bottom line, are you going to stay on nine or not?
Are you going to answer my question? That's all I have.
We need to ask him to leave.
He did.
Yes.
I'm leaving.
Public hearing is, there are no more opponents?
Public hearing is closed. Councilmembers?
This is.
Second, roll call, please.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's passed seven, or six to zero. We'll take items 10 through 12 as one case. 10 is resolution preliminary plat entitled, "Abood First Edition Replat 1," located at 6201 South 90th Street, is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. 11 is the replat transmitted here with entitled, "Abood First Edition Replat 1," is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. And 12 is subdivision agreement is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda items number 10 through 12 are today. Proponents, please.
Doug Kellner, Thompson, Reson Dohner, 10836 Old Mill Road, here on behalf of the Apken, available to answer any questions if you have.
Doug, thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
10 through 12 are adopted, six to zero. Present city council rule 70, agenda item number 13, shall be laid over two weeks for publication in public hearing. Present city council rule 70, agenda item number 14 through 16, shall be laid over for two weeks. Present city council rule 7, agenda item number 17, shall be laid over two weeks for publication in public hearing. Liquor, item number 18, Louise Wine Dry Dive, 16920 Wright Plaza, Suite 118, requests permission for an addition of the present liquor license to adjust and extend the existing L-shaped outdoor area from 30 by 35 to 25 by 50. Aids communications from permits and inspections.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 18 is now. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, Mike Kelly, 7134 Pacific, this is merely in addition to an existing license for a patio which will primarily be used for smoking, and I'm pretty sure complies with the master plan. Although I haven't checked the Spad's law, but.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Public hearing is closed. Counsel.
Con, contingent on the proper permits?
Yeah. Is that part of your motion, contingent? Okay. It's moved in second. A roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Pass.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
And Jaram passed the second time for a potential conflict of interest. It's approved, 501 passing. Item number 19, Old Mattress Factory Bar and Grill, 501 North 13th Street, request permission for an addition to the present liquor license for a roof deck approximately 66 by 28, and we have communications from their attorney.
Public hearing on agenda, item 19 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. President. Mark Anenbach, 1601 Dodge Street, here on behalf of the proponent.
Okay, Mark.
Do you have any questions? I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any other proponents wish to be heard? Any opponents wish to be heard? Public hearing is closed. Moved in second. A roll call.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Approved, six to zero. Item number 20, Kitchen Table, 1415 Farnham Street, request permission for an addition to the present liquor license location of an outdoor patio area approximately 16 by 9 to the north.
Public hearing on agenda, item 20 is today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, members of the council, Amy Lawrence and Barrett Home, 1700 Farnham
Public hearing on agenda items number ten through twelve are today. Proponents, please.
Doug Kellner, Thompson, Reson Dornor, 10836 Old Mill Road, here on behalf of the applicant, available to answer any questions if you have any.
Doug, thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Gernat.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's approved, six to zero. Item number twenty-one, Shelby's, 2607 North Main Street, request permission for a special license license for a beer garden on July eleventh from 7:00 p.m. to 12:00 midnight with music ending at midnight.
Public hearing on agenda, item twenty-one is now. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Jeremy Edelman, 2607 North Main Street. I'm here to answer any questions the council may have this afternoon.
Thank you, Jeremy. Any other proponents wish to be heard? Any opponents wish to be heard? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Thompson.
Yes, two comments, one being, we know that you did this last year, and it seemed like it was very successful.
Yes.
And we appreciate the fact that you worked with the neighbors and cut the music off at 12:00 midnight, and I wish there would be, you know, a lot more of these kind of success stories. I also want to say thank you for being one of the few Elk Hornites, or Elk Hornyites, however you want to say it.
I don't know if I'd use that term, but yeah.
To come way down here, because I've had some of them say I'm not going down there, and so I appreciate that you would take the time to come on down.
Well, today was worth the price of admission, I'll say that.
Why would you waste your time?
Right, yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
Their motion.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Gernat.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's approved, six to zero.
Thank you, have a good afternoon.
Item number twenty-two, Thirteenth Street Brick House, 2202 South Thirteenth Street, request permission for a special license for a beer garden on June 28th from 12:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. with music ending at 1:00 a.m.
Agenda item number twenty-two is today. Proponents, please.
Barb Crum, 4910 South 30th Street, Omaha, Nebraska.
Thank you, Barb. Any other proponents wish to be heard? Are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Gernat.
I'd be happy to approve this with the music ending at midnight. Would you go along with that?
I will.
Motion to approve.
Uh, amend, you want to amend the music to midnight?
Midnight.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded with the amendment. Roll call.
Gernat.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Approved as amended, six to zero.
Thank you.
We'll take items twenty-three through twenty-six, they're all Kino applications. Twenty-three is Big Red is granted approval, operated at Kino at Billy O's at 14242 Fort Street, Douglas County. Twenty-four is Brick Street Tavern, 4936 South 135th Street. Twenty-five is Soho Lounge at twenty, pardon, 222226 North 114th Street, we have a communication opposing. And twenty-six is Surfside Club, 14445 North River Drive, Douglas County.
Agenda items numbers twenty-three through twenty-six, the public hearing is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council. My name's Katrina Coffey. I'm vice president of marketing for Big Red Kino. We're located at 11248 John Galt Boulevard, and the owners are here. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Gernat.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-three through twenty-six are adopted, six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed consent agenda shall be taken up by city council merely following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by city council rules order.
Public hearing on agenda items number twenty-seven through thirty were held last week. It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second that these, that agenda items number twenty-seven through thirty be approved. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Gernat.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-seven through thirty are passed, seven to zero. On the-
I just wanted to make public record, I had asked you- Yours on agenda item number thirty, and it appears the city is going to be saving over $55,000 by approving this independent contractor, and I just wanted to make that public record.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna remove item number thirty-two from the consent agenda for the resolutions and take that up right after the other resolutions.
Thank you. The public hearings on agenda items numbers thirty-one-
And then thirty-
Thirty-one, and then we're gonna skip thirty-two, and then thirty-three through-
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven are today. Any proponents, and if you want to come up, please identify the agenda item in which you, which to speak, but the public hearing on those are today.
My name is David Smallheiser from the city law department, and I'm here with regard to item number forty-seven, the continuing contract between the city and the National Safety Council. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Would that prove?
Items-
Items. All but thirty-two. Yeah. Thirty-one through forty-seven.
Thirty-one through-
Second.
It's been moved, is there a second? Moved in second, it's roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Gernat.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items thirty-one, thirty-three through forty-seven are adopted, seven to zero. Now, item thirty-two, resolution that the contract with Old Castle Materials Midwest Company for OPW 52486 is hereby approved. We have a communications opposing and a document submitted by Public Works.
The public hearing on agenda, item number thirty-two is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, opponents, please.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Andrew Beal. I'm an attorney at Wallantine, O'Toole, McQuillan, and Gordon located at 11240 Davenport Street. We represent Western Engineering Company, and from Western Engineering Company today here with me are Bob Lesmeister and Steve Epley, and I believe this was made part of the record, but I distributed a letter late last week to the members of the council through Mr. Brown there, and so that pretty much outlines the concerns that we have with this item, and of course, it relates to Public Work Project 52486. So this involves a resurfacing of Dodge Street from Twenty-Second Street to 102nd Street and Military Avenue from Pratt to Fort Streets. Bids were opened May fourteenth on this project. There were two bidders, my client and Old Castle Materials. By way of background, after the contract documents were published, the city published an addendum to the contract documents, which all bidders were required to acknowledge in their bid. The addendum did three things. Basically, it changed the start dates for certain aspects of the project, made changes to the concrete types used in the project, and it changed the manner in which the milling waste was to be disposed of, putting more of the responsibility on the contractor to dispose of the millings. These changes could have had a material impact on the amount of the bid, and I say could have because we'll never know, because although my client complied with bidding instructions, incorporated addendum one into its bid, the only competing bidder in this project, who happened to be the low bidder, did not incorporate it in addendum one into the bid. I'm sure you're all familiar with municipal code section ten, one-ten, which states the city has the ability to reject a bid for substantial noncompliance, but may overlook minor defects within the bid, provided they're cured within seven days from the date the city notifies the bidder. Minor defects are things like missing signatures, failure to attach, power of attorney to the bid bond, et cetera, et cetera. In other words, these are things that don't affect the scope of the project. However, here we have a bid being considered for approval that failed to account for the full scope of the project, and this has to be envisioned, or it has to be what was envisioned when the substantial noncompliance language was drafted into the code. So, and just by way of illustration, in 2011, my client, Western Engineering, submitted a bid for OPW Project 52099, which is a $1.5 million resurfacing project. Although Western Engineering was the low bidder by almost $36,000 on that project, they failed to reflect a subcontractor as a small and/or emerging small business on an exhibit attached to their bid. In fact, the admitted subcontractor was not listed in the Tier Two Emerging Business Registry until the day before the bidding closed, and then they ultimately were listed in the registry the day before bidding closed. Western Engineering was not aware that that subcontractor had been newly listed. The city notified Western Engineering of the defect. They made a timely appeal to correct it, but were not allowed to do so, and their bid was rejected on that technicality. So now, today, we have a bid that is more seriously deficient than their bid in 2011, so our position is either the city demands strict compliance with the bid instructions or it doesn't. If it does, then they have to reject Old Castle's bid today. If it does not, then it wrongfully rejected my client's bid in 2011, and furthermore, if they accept this bid today, we believe they're compromising the integrity of the bidding system. So with that, I'll open up for questions, and thank you.
Okay. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? But that public hearing is closed. Ms. Pierce, I think you have, I think you might want to come forward and talk about just kind of what the process is and how the city went about its business in doing this.
Sure. Heather Tippy Pierce, Public Works. I'm the General Services Division Manager, and so we kind of shepherd the bid letting process as well as the legislative services process for our department. Standard practice of the Public Works Department and most of the departments in the city kind of have multiple levels of evaluation, and that's done as a rule to protect the best interests of the city. In this case, the bid opening committee determined that, as is routine for the bid opening committee, that failure to acknowledge the addendum at bid time was not a material to the public reading of the bid, and that's pretty much all the bid opening committee does and requires. Basically, is the bid security attached? Is the bid actually submitted? So if it's a line item bid, did they fill everything in, that sort of thing? Then it is referred to the department for review. So at that first level of scrutiny, it was determined to, both bids were determined to be responsive, and then the determination about the addendum is then shepherded to the department to evaluate and review. As our practice, we in the department have two levels of review, the General Services Division review and then the engineering review. At the general services level, we check for all required municipal code attachments. So in the case that was alluded to from 2011, that was a rejection based on failure to comply with the small and emerging small business requirements of the municipal code that's separate from the section ten dash, I think, one-ten that Western's attorney alluded to. That's in a separate section in the municipal code, and that is specifically required under the SCB requirements, similar to rejections that have been based on failure to comply with the RC one requirements that's in section 108. So that's one of the things that we look at. Both bidders passed that review level. So when we got to the issue of was the addenda requirements complied with or not, that happens at the engineering review. So we took both bidders through those first two levels of scrutiny, and then we went to the engineering review. So the construction division staff, which oversees all of our resurfacing projects, took a look at both bids, took a look at the fact that Old Castle was significantly lower and did not acknowledge the addendum, and did a request for information from Old Castle, which is standard practice we do with a lot of the bids that come in, because we want to make sure that we are getting exactly what we asked for, and we want to, as I said, protect the best interests of the city. At that time during the RFI process, the engineers were assured in writing by Old Castle that the bid price that they submitted did incorporate all of the scopes of work, and that Old Castle was prepared to complete the project as it was bid, including the addenda, the contract amendments. So we, as a department, believe that we are getting the best pricing for the scope of[1537.97]